Is any of this button?
At this time, I'd like to call the Trinity County Planning Commission's regular meeting to order at 6:00 PM on September 8th. First on the agenda is public comment. During the public comment period, members of the public may address the planning commission on any matters not listed on the agenda that is within the subject matter jurisdiction of the planning commission. Is there any public comment?
Hey, this is Eric Wiseman. I just called in. I wasn't able to make it in person. But I have a comment that is not on the agenda that I would like to voice to the planning commission.
Go ahead, Eric.
All right, good. You guys can hear me. I'm just dialed in like 30 seconds ago on my phone and I'm on Zoom trying to figure this out. Okay, so it is related to one of the agenda items, but it's not the same. You know, and I went to the planning department yesterday and brought it up. I filed a complaint against an adjacent property owner, Todd Watkins, about seven and a half months ago for illegal or for grading issues as well as running a commercial business from his property. And I haven't really gotten any resolution from the planning department whatsoever. In fact, I was just told that Watkins Tree Service is considered a cottage industry business, even though he's got commercial vehicles and commercial trailers and over 10 employees. And so, and they're using Reservoir Road, you know, anywhere from three to six times a week with these vehicles. So that would be, it's somewhat related to the Scribner parcel split, just because there's already additional traffic using Reservoir Road for this business.
Thank you.
Yep, that's it. That's all I have.
Is there any more public comment on Zoom?
Any hands raised?
Okay, if there is no more public comments, I'm going to close public comments and move on to the regular calendar. Agenda item would be to approve or amend the minutes from June 23rd and July 14th, 2022.
I'll make a motion. Approve the minutes.
I'll second with a very minor correction. On item two.
What date?
Which date?
Sorry, the June 23rd. So the roll call vote was five to nothing. Right?
All were attending.
Yeah. Very minor, but so I did second that with that minor correction.
Okay, all those in favor of accepting the the minutes from June 23rd and July 14th, 2022 with that one minor adjustment, say aye.
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 Aye, all opposed. Motion carries unanimously. Moving on to item number two, the tentative parcel map P-20-40. This item is returning to the planning commission after its initial approval to account for the comments, comment regarding the project that didn't make it into the item's original material when it went to the planning commission. A request to divide the 3.27 acre parcel into two resulting parcels of approximately 2.04 and 1.23 acres for residential use. Access to the project site is Reservoir Road and Highway 3, approximately 500 feet northeast of the intersection of State Highway 3 and North Street. Leaverville Assessor Parcel Number 024-380-340-000. Applicant P. Scribner Planner is Ms. Fisher. Would you mind giving us an introduction? Thank you.
All right, thank you so much, planning commissioners and members of the public in the audience and on Zoom. I'm going to spend the next few minutes discussing a history of P-20-40, which is a tentative parcel map for a parcel split. The comments that we received, which brought this item back to the commission. We don't want to focus the discussion about denying the map. We believe that any concerns, if there needs to be an amendment, it would be on the conditions to make sure that we capture county code, including the fire safe ordinance. Because of that, we invited both DOT and Leaverville Fire to attend today and make sure that any concerns regarding emergency services and access are captured in the conditions on this parcel map, which was originally approved back in April. Because those were the two main concerns that were in the comment that was submitted to us that didn't make it into the original planning commission staff materials when it did go back in April. And because of these concerns, the planning department was advised to bring it back and make sure that all these concerns are captured and we are encouraging safe development in Leaverville. So very briefly, and Mr. Pence with DOT also brought a copy of this map and can speak to this as well. The parcel that is part of this subdivision was originally created in the Riley map project. And so it is that green parcel that is highlighted on the screen here. And so there were concerns that were brought up going back to this parcel regarding access and the grade of the property. And so we want to make sure that everything is captured going forward and that we can address any concerns regarding this project. So one of the recent comments that we received was in regards to the proposed development on the parcel not being consistent with the zoning or general plan designations. So the parcel originally is split. So it is both RR with a one acre minimum as well as commercial as the general plan designation and just RR as the general plan designation on the other part of the parcel. Whereas that tiny little sliver of zoning that is that abuts the highway is residential office. But the existing housing pads where the proposed dwellings are going to go are both located within the RR section of the parcel, which can kind of be more plainly shown on later slides. So I just wanted to show what the parcel looks like because there's been a lot of discussion about the impact of this split on Reservoir Road and whether or not it would be possible to access parcel A from the highway. But the issue with that is that it's it's very like the topography of that would make it very, very difficult, if not impossible, to connect it, connect from the highway all the way through to Reservoir Road. So I tried to find some imagery that could show that, to show the incline coming up from the highway to Reservoir Road. And I think it's important to note that the access from Reservoir Road onto the proposed parcel A is already existing. And so what we're essentially doing is using the access off of Reservoir Road for parcel A and using the access off of the highway for parcel B. And so here is the proposed map. And so at the top, there is the aforementioned parcel A and then at the bottom parcel B. And as I stated before, the proposed development is for two dwellings. There hasn't been plans as far as when I routed to building for any accessory dwelling units, but that is a possibility in the future. But at this time, it's just for these two potential dwellings. And yeah, that's, that's all that we have for development on these parcels at this time.
Thank you. Is there any questions for staff?
I have some technical questions. Is that okay? Okay. So there's a lot of discussion in the comments about this Riley parcel map and that road that there was a condition requiring connection to Highway 3. If you could go back to that map, I'm just curious. Why wasn't that implemented? And how does that actually provide an additional access emergency evacuation route? It looks like it parallels Highway 3. Where does it actually connect to anything that would aid in evacuation of that subdivision? It doesn't?
So I can touch on this briefly, but there was a board resolution that essentially vacated part of the road that was proposed for this parcel and that made it so this whole like access point could no longer go forward. And so that's why, like even though we have it on the map, it's no longer feasible for development of these parcels to have that road go through.
Would it have provided an additional evacuation route from the Manzanita Reservoir Road area?
I don't believe so, no.
Okay. So the concerns about the fire department, we took out the condition number nine last time. And so if that condition was put back in, would that address the fire department concern in terms of providing an adequate turnaround and a turnout? Or would there have to be other conditions to address Leaverville Fire Department concerns?
I don't want to speak to Leaverville Fire, excuse me, but from our discussions, it makes it sound like, yes, if we were to reestablish that, then it would address any concerns about like the length of the road and how close the turnaround is. I also later in the presentation included the conditions, the condition that was modified and the condition that was struck. I don't know if we wanted to discuss that further.
Yeah, because the condition that was in the most recent resolution says that they have to meet the Trinity County Fire Safe Ordinance standards. So how are they going to be doing that? According to the plan that we approved, I mean, where is the turnaround? That would be required?
Yeah, we can switch if you'd like.
Okay, so per fire safe, the county fire safe ordinance, they have a distinct definition for a road and a driveway. So the road ends at the property line. So that yellow section on that map, I don't, it's not up there now, but the yellow portion that was highlighted is an easement. That portion would be an extension according to the fire safe code. That would be an extension of Reservoir Road. And so it says that they have to have a turnaround at the end of the road. And so the reason I had included that other, part of the reason I had included the option to improve, increase the size of the roundabout at the, or the turnaround at the end, at the end of Reservoir Road is that could be an alternate to, because it only really extends 200 or 300 feet. That's not really that far. And I talked to Todd about, I don't, I believe we agreed that that would be adequate to increase the size of that. However, they could also do a hammerhead type turnaround right where Reservoir Road starts going up the hill or somewhere in that area. We believe that would still be another option. It's just, we wanted basically approval that, that even the turnaround itself, even though it's not right at the very end of the road, was okay to use that as long as it met the fire code. It still would need to meet the fire code, one way or the other. I don't, I don't believe a turnaround, it's probably still required at the, at the end of the driveway. But unless there's a public easement, I don't mean an easement that allows firefighters to use that. That is not, that's, that, a turnaround at the end of the driveway doesn't really meet the intent of the fire safe code.
Right, so the way the, the language is drafted right now, the language that we approved in April, it says that they have to meet the Trinity County Fire Safe Ordinance standards. So
It doesn't say that still. So it still is required that they meet the standard, including turnarounds, which are part of the standard.
Okay, so would they submit a revised plan to you or how would that work to make sure that that gets done?
Well, what they said was a tentative map, parcel map, but that is not the improvement plan. And part of the conditions is that they submitted an improvement plan and they intend to do that. So that's not, they just haven't, they haven't done that yet. It's, you know, it's a long, can be a long process and their engineer has a lot of other responsibilities too, so.
So would we have to add any language to the way it's written now in order to make sure that the fire department's concerns are addressed?
Don't believe so. No, I think we're, it probably doesn't really need any additional language added. That Todd had a, he did mention something about
It was a turnout also.
He mentioned, so the road, the Reservoir Road itself is a dead end road that actually is longer than what the fire safe code allows. Yet they have mitigate, optional mitigations and one of those is running a water line down there. I believe there's a water line most of the way anyway. So there are, there might be like a mitigation like that, but that's part of meeting the code. And so we've said in the, in the conditions, they need to meet the fire safe code. So it's, I don't believe we need to rewrite anything for that.
If I may, is the end of Reservoir Road, that turnaround, does that meet the fire?
It doesn't. It's a 30 foot radius. The easement for it does meet it, but the, but the actual paved area doesn't.
Right. And so, and I, looking at the map, the, because there's a, there's an easement to the property that the property doesn't encompass the turnaround or the roundabout or whatnot, the end of the road. And so by expanding that, that would be, that would be encroaching on someone else's private property other than the applicant?
Well, I should clarify the, so the part in yellow there, it says it's an easement on that map, but it's really a more of a potential easement. Mistress Scribner actually owns the property in question, but he also owns that remainder parcel that goes up to, goes up farther to the water tank. And so he owns all that property. So there's not really an easement at this point. He would have to dedicate an easement.
Oh, so then expanding the end of the road would be at, would be at the discretion of the owner who wants this to occur. So that would not be, there'd be no issue expanding the, the end of the road?
I don't believe so. The only other thing, the thing that's on the tentative map that was submitted, there is kind of a circular area that shows an easement as well onto Mr. Watkins' property. And my understanding and Gabe may correct me if he's wrong, my understanding is that easement no longer exists. I don't. Is that correct, Gabe?
Yeah, apparently that's kind of controversial.
So I guess that's a civil issue. So I, that's not really something that we can control here, so.
Okay, thank you.
I had just a couple minor questions, I think, for Skylar or Ms. Fisher. So if, if he doesn't subdivide the property, I'm assuming he would still need an encroachment permit to attach to Reservoir Road. But are there other conditions that he would need in order to just put one house out there? I mean, what, what does putting two houses out there entail? You know, different from what one house is?
Right, so if for, if we decide to revoke the approval, I guess, of the tentative parcel map and we were to just go ahead with the two structures that they're currently planning to build, since there's already an easement onto Reservoir Road and they already have that access from the highway, that would be the limit of the residential development at this time. Because in RR, you can put down one single family residence. But with current California ADU law, they could put on a second dwelling. So it essentially would go from two to four, depending on whether or not the split is allowed. But I think something that like really helped me understand the project and the split is it's just so difficult to build a road just from the top at Reservoir Road down to the highway because of the incline. So currently you wouldn't be able to, for example, drive from one house to the other house. And so I guess I just wanted to note that in the question.
I mean, my question is more just like, so right now he can build one house with an ADU on that lot?
Right.
And if it's split, he could build two houses with two ADUs potentially, max?
Right.
Okay, are there other conditions that would be kicked in if, if he just took that? Would he have to do the turnaround and the turnouts and all that kind of stuff?
He would still need to comply with the fire safe ordinance, but currently he wouldn't need to make.
Yeah, you can speak into the microphone if you like, or you can stand in front, at your discretion.
Okay, I will stay here. So I would say that the, if we don't approve this, then the fire safe ordinance says for the fire department, they're only allowed to require improvements that are, they can't require, require improvements to existing roads unless it's like a subdivision like this case. So they, they could require a turnaround at the end of the driveway, but they really can't require a turnaround at the end of the road because that's existing. Does that make sense?
Right, yeah.
So, so, so this actually, he has a little bit more fire safe improvements he would have to do this way. Also that with the ADU thing, sure, yes, he, he could build four buildings if he splits it. Even without that, he still could build the ADU up off of Reservoir Road. So it's not changing really the number of houses he can build off of Reservoir Road legally.
Right, that, that's one of my, when I was counting up.
Is there any more questions?
Just one more real quick. So there were comments about the confusion about the road names. And I'm just curious, what's the process to require those road names to be changed? Is that just, because I drive an ambulance, it just scares the heck out of me when I get a call for Lakeview and Northlake because there's three Lakeford U roads. So if you got a medical call on Town Reservoir, you wouldn't necessarily know where to go. Is there a mechanism to rename the roads?
There is a mechanism. It's, sorry, I'm laughing. It's funny that you ask because that has been a big part of this week is we've been doing a lot of road renaming work because it is a problem with emergency services, especially with the road renaming and tracking that. And so the planning department works really hard with our consultant RCD, who is responsible for updating our GIS to make sure that across the board, road names are accurate. For example, changing from LANE to LN for lane makes all the difference, as I've been told with looking up addresses. So if anyone has concern that their property can't be accessed or found by emergency services, please reach out to info-planning or Debbie at the planning department and we can.
So I'm asking, what's the, what's the mechanism to rename it? And would it be appropriate to have that as a condition of this subdivision to rename Town Reservoir Road to Jackass Ridge Road or something like that?
The entirety of the road or just the address as it accesses?
That's what I'm asking you. You know, how do you eliminate that confusion? Is it, is it just a whole separate mechanism, separate from the subdivision approval? Yes, yes or no?
Yes.
Okay, great. That's what I needed to know. Thanks.
Yeah, of course.
Is it, is it a hard process to go through to rename the road? Is the mechanism where it's very challenging to, and it's strenuous and a lot of extra work to get a road renamed?
To change the length of the road, that would be by board resolution. So if we were to readdress, then we have a mechanism for that. But if you were to change like an entire road name, then we would need to bring that to the board for approval.
And for clarity, parcel A would be potentially accessed through Reservoir Road. And B is a driveway that connects to Highway 3. So it's not reservoir.
What? There are two Town Reservoir.
Reservoir Town Road, that's, that, that was a mistake in the planning. There were, because it was, it was written that it was going to be connected to Reservoir Town Road in this. But Reservoir Town Road is, it, it exists, but that has nothing to do with this project. Is that correct?
Well, it does access to the top parcel, parcel A, but not?
Not, no, there's Reservoir Road and then there's Reservoir Town Road.
So Town, Town Reservoir Road, Reservoir Road is the one that goes up around the top.
For to parcel A.
Town Reservoir Road goes to the first parcel on the, on the Riley map, but not to parcel two on the Riley map, which is the one that we're dealing with here. So originally Town Reservoir Road was that pink line that went all the way through all those parcels on the Riley map, but it got a vacated, most of it, except, so really right now Town Reservoir Road only accesses the, I believe there's like three driveways plus the road departments right there.
Well, but also it goes from Reservoir Road up to the water tanks. That's, that's the confusion.
It does not connect.
That's what you showed on the map.
I'm, I'm not sure. That one is called Town Reservoir Road is, do you know? The gravel road going up the hill?
On this map, on this map that you presented, it's Town Reservoir Road going from where the parcels, parcel A tees off up to the water tanks is also Town Reservoir Road. That's why I was asking about whether or not that could be tied to this subdivision. Right.
So is that, I mean, that, that Town Reservoir Road that goes up to the reservoir is, is not connected. That's, that's at the end of Reservoir Road and that looks like that's kind of a scramble to the top of the mountain. Whereas in the Town Reservoir Road that connects to Highway 3 is an actual driveway that has three residential homes connected to it.
It's actually a county maintained road.
Okay, thank you. So my, my question is, at this time, parcel A would be potentially connecting to Reservoir Road. Parcel B in the split would be connecting to Highway 3. Right? And so therefore, this discussion of changing road names does not need to exist.
Well, but on the map, parcel A tees off of Town Reservoir Road.
Parcel A is at the end of, well, the Town Reservoir Road, which I'm not sure why they, they call Town Reservoir Road, the end of Reservoir Road on this map, on Google Earth, it doesn't say that. So like, is that? It's not connecting to Town Reservoir Road, it's connecting to Reservoir Road, parcel A. Is that correct?
I, I would agree with that, I believe, but I'm not sure the, it could be the, the GIS data is incorrect that is labeled on that map. And that, it may not have an official name. But I'm not sure how that works with emergency services in response. I, I don't know. We'd have to probably go back and, and sort that out with the 911 system and all that.
Okay, but the Reservoir Road that is in this, the Town Reservoir Road in discussion for changing road names and such was the one that connects Reservoir Road to the reservoir?
Yeah, that's the one where the, the public has asked how that renamed to Jackass Ridge Road or something.
Jackass Ridge, okay. Right, okay, thank you. Is there any more questions for staff? Then at this point, I'd like to open it up to the applicants. Thank you, Skylar, to, to answer some questions. Thank you, Skylar, to to answer some questions.
Hi, I'm Gabe Jocelyn, I'm the surveyor for this project. So my understanding that Town Reservoir Road is the road that the road department is connected to, right? And then right above there is Watkins. So it's that property would be to the west of our lot here. So not not a park. And and the access road to the water tank is an access easement, it's never been named.
So as you being the surveyor, what you're saying is that the access from the end of Reservoir Road to the reservoir is not named. That the Town Reservoir Road, based on your understanding, is mistaken on this.
And it's never been connected to the existing Town Reservoir Road, connects to the road department, and has never connected to the water tanks. Correct?
Correct. Okay, thank you.
I wrote, I saw the the letters that were posted online from Mrs. Goodyear. And the one yesterday was posted from an S. Smith. And so I I wrote a letter in response to that, those letters. I brought several copies. Can I give them out?
Yeah, and if you would like to read it, present that to us.
I have a few more if there's not enough. All right, September eighth, 2022. This letter is in response to the letter dated March ninth, 2022, the letter dated August sixth, 2022, and the email dated August seventeenth, 2022, all by Ms. Gail Goodyear. And also the letter dated September seventh, 2022, yesterday by S. Smith. In March ninth, in the March ninth letter, Ms. Goodyear makes several arguments concerning fire safety and traffic congestion, including roads, widths, and parking needs. I would like to bring up the memorandum dated August twenty second, 2022, being a letter from the Weaverville Fire Chief Todd Corbett, indicating that a turnaround at the building site and a turnout in the driveway will suffice to address existing fire safe ordinances. In Ms. Goodyear's letter, she makes a note, note number two, that residents spend much more time at home and from work, which causes more need for UPS deliveries. I would point out that if it is true that more people are staying home, that that would mean less trips to work and to the market. She brings up the issue of on-street parking. But my client's project will not create any new on-street parking along Reservoir Road as the lot lies beyond said road. I would also like to bring up the fact that none of the neighbors residing within 300 feet that were notified on this tentative map have made any like complaint concerning traffic issues. At least, not that I know of. In August sixth letter, Ms. Goodyear brings up the 80-foot wide road easement that is shown on the Riley parcel map. That would be the pink one on the map that she showed. The road she's addressing was abandoned by the Board of Supervisors after the map was recorded and before any road improvements had been made. Subsequently, a building permit was issued and a house built in the middle of the proposed road location, Mr. Watkins' house. Ms. Goodyear makes a point as to the existing CCRs imposed on lots along Reservoir Road. She holds that a new lot should not be allowed that does not have the same CCRs. I would like to make the argument that whether the lot is split or not, it is not subject to these CCRs. It is not reasonable that CCRs be placed on neighboring lands because a lot wants to access a county road. Where would it end? Ms. Goodyear indicates that a 13% driveway would not be suitable for the elderly, the young, or emergency services. At this point, I have to think that Ms. Goodyear is not bringing up legitimate concerns, but maybe that she is just listing any and everything that she can to come up with to stop this project. The 13% grade is within standards. Mrs. Goodyear brings up various types of possible construction that may be unlike the stick-built houses along Reservoir Road. I would like to argue that this project is compatible with the existing general plan and zoning of the site. Ms. Goodyear makes an argument that there will now be a bottleneck at the location of the encroachment onto Reservoir Road. I would argue that the opposite is true. This project will provide a certain amount of road improvement to this area, and the constant easement use of being a driveway will ensure that the area is kept in a usable state. In the August seventeenth email, Ms. Goodyear makes the same arguments as previously addressed concerning fire safety, road bottleneck, and 80-foot wide dependent road from the Riley parcel map. In a letter dated September seventh, 2022, S. Smith states that this division is not in conformance with the general plan. The existing general plan designation is rural residential, and the existing zoning is RR1. No changes to these designations have been proposed. The lots proposed are compliant with the existing designations. The argument is made that the lots do not share the zoning and characteristics of the area. If you look at the, see that the lot is located in an island of larger lots that are surrounded by smaller lots. By splitting this lot, we are making lots that are more that more closely share the surrounding characteristics. The argument is made that the existing CCRs of lots located along Reservoir Road will not be applied to parcel A, and that ADUs may be allowed. I would make the argument that our projects' relationship with these lots along Reservoir Road amount to a shared use of a county road, and that the boundaries of where the CCRs may be implemented start and stop at the boundaries of the own when they were created. The argument is made that our project should be viewed as an east Jackass Ridge area and should not connect to the west Jackass Ridge area because of existing zoning and lot sizes. I would argue that our project is compliant with the existing general plan and zoning. If we do not hold to the general plan and zoning, then we are sort of making things up as we go, are we not? S. Smith also brings up drainage and erosion issues. These issues have already been addressed by existing conditions for approval, and an erosion-draining drainage plan is forthcoming. I'd like to point out that allowing land use projects to go forward is a good idea for our community considering the existing housing shortage in our state. The Weaverville Community Plan states on page two, under Major Proposals, paragraph five, to encourage the area's high level of environmental quality by providing for growth on existing privately held lands adjacent to those areas already developed. This project is more than just compliant with the general plan and zoning. It is exactly the sort of project that is to be encouraged. The idea being that new lots are created in areas with existing services like water and sewer and by existing schools and fire department. My client, Mr. Scribner, submitted this project September eighth, 2020, exactly two years now. Let's get this project behind us.
Thank you, Gabe. Is there any more, any questions for the applicant? Well, if there's not, thank you, Gabe. Why don't we have our the fire chief, Todd Corbett, come up and address this? Thank you for coming.
Todd Corbett, Weaverville Fire Chief. Basically, from the standpoint of fire safety, fire ordinance, I mean, we're looking at this as just one additional house being added to the end of Reservoir Road. I know there's a lot of talk about the the old subdivision, and a lot of this is carryover from that. From our standpoint, it is is just one more house that we're accessing as long as it meets the 830 fire safe code, especially the egress and emergency access under Article Two. We are okay with it. We would definitely strongly encourage and prefer to turn around, turn around to be at the end of Reservoir Road. There is no confusion on our standpoint between Town Reservoir and Reservoir. It's pretty simple and cut and dry. We all know what's what and where we're going. So just like I said, as as looking at this, one additional house at the end of Reservoir Road, we're we're totally okay with it as long as is the 830 fire safe code is is followed. I I noted in my comments that he has at the max grade of 16, which that's pretty common in Trinity County. So any changes, regrading, reservicing, would have to either stay at that grade or or lessen that grade. It does exceed, which I believe, I didn't write it down on my notes, but I believe it's 150 feet. Or in excess of that requires a midway turnout, which basically allows us to pass as as citizens are egressing out of there to where we can both pass on the road. But we are, the fire district is okay with Mr. Scribner making the turnaround at his house if it isn't feasible size-wise, or if it encroaches on other properties at the end of Reservoir Road.
Thank you, Mr. Corbett.
Yeah.
Is there any questions for the local fire chief? Okay, thank you very much. At this point, I will open the discussion up to public comment. Are there any public comments in the chambers?
My name is Michelle Legring Myers, and I am representing Gail Goodyear of Weaverville. I have a statement that I'll read for you. Fire protection for Weaverville is essential to your decisions. County of Trinity liability is limited when tentative parcel map conditions provide emergency access and exit as well as protecting existing homes, land, and public utilities. Maintain fire and emergency exit and entrance for Jackass Ridge by continuing the TPM condition, sorry, for construction of an additional road to Highway Three, alternate to Mulligan Street, Manzanita Drive, Reservoir Road. The service road to the north Weaverville Water Reservoir and the Water Tower are essential to stopping fires. Do not allow an encroachment permit for proposed parcel A to create a bottleneck between Reservoir Road and the service road. Select a road category appropriate for through access to the Weaverville Water Tower and Reservoir. Category D is not appropriate for through access. Only approve east side Jackass Ridge land splits if access to Highway Three is from that side of the ridge. There is not room for a fire turnaround on the steep proposed parcel A of P 2040. This lack makes dividing this property ill-advised as creating the fire turnaround elsewhere hinders neighbors' properties and adjoining neighborhoods. Rejecting proposed P 2040 is logical because it's against the Trinity County general plan. P 2040 land is zoned rural residential, and the neighborhoods to the west, which are not shown well on the application maps, are zoned residential. Rural residential east Jackass Ridge does not share the same characteristics and zoning as residential west Jackass Ridge. Visual comparison of these two areas, along with the numerous complaints filed regarding rural residential land use, show rejecting this proposed parcel split as not having similar characteristics and zoning is appropriate. The proposed land split is not congruent with the Trinity County general plan. Thank you for fully considering all that is in the written comments submitted for P 2040.
Thank you, Ms. Myers.
Thank you.
Is there any public comment on Zoom?
Eric.
Oh, I'm sorry, before the Zoom. Yes, ma'am, thank you.
My name is Anginette Taft. I own two homes in the Young subdivision and am Hayfort Volunteer Fire Department Captain, retired. The zoning for P 2040 is rural residential, along with the rest of the east Jackass Ridge subdivision. Therefore, it should not be appended as a sort of a wart on the thing or attached to our subdivision, which is zoned residential. And that is an important distinction made in our general plan. So that's why I'm bringing that up. There are quite different zoning designations, and the one that's especially noteworthy is the ability to add dwellings to your to your properties. And that isn't allowed in residential and is in rural residential. So I I really think that's the primary reason for denying the land split based on that noncompliance with the county general plan. Another reason, of course, is the impact on Reservoir Road, which a wide paved, rubric road and major access to the water tank and so forth. It's been highly talked about here, and I'm glad to hear what Chief Todd said. CAL FIRE has been instrumental in fighting fires up there that have saved our town and our whole region. And that must not be compromised with any political handshakes that that they just must not happen. The fact that Town Reservoir Road and the east side in the in the subdivision that went through there was compromised by who knows when and why and how should not be should not fall on the on the backs of the people who are in the residential zoned area. And so I think that just the fact that that happened shouldn't become the problem for those of us who are in a different zoned area. And that that community over there on Town Reservoir Road needs to deal with the issue of how to get in and out of all the lots that are over there, including that whole Riker area. So I think it's imperative for that second reason to to not go forward with this. But I understand that you have emergency rules that you that you say will be followed, but they're all going to be have to be followed after you've. I'm concerned about you approving any of this before there's any visible, any visible sign that the that the project will in fact have the plans it takes to do the actual work. There's been plenty in Trinity County where we'll do it, and then it doesn't happen, and somebody and we say, well, but they approved it, so I'm concerned about that. But the upholding the Trinity County general plan, I think, is a very important item, and that it should be taken seriously, not just shined off, oh, well, it's just it's just one lot. It's just, it's so close, it doesn't matter. It does matter. That's why we have zoning. Otherwise, we wouldn't go to all this trouble on the general plan to make zoning. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Taft. Is there any more public comment from the hall? Is there a public comment from Zoom? Deborah?
Eric?
Yeah, I I have a comment. Thank you very much. I was I was gonna raise my hand again, but I figured it was getting old. And thank you, Duncan, for for calling on me. So I would agree with the previous two commenters that the the parcel split is problematic for several reasons. You know, I'm not against development, and let me preface this all by saying I live at the end of, and this is all confusing, but the end of Reservoir Road, where the big turnaround is, at the where the gate is. So that would, parcel A would be accessing through there. So that's why I'm interested in this. But the the Town Reservoir Road easement that was abandoned was abandoned because Wes Scribner built a house and a garage on the road. And then now, you know, the that easement got abandoned, and now they want to come through and go through the top. So it's, I don't know, just there's a bunch of shady stuff kind of going on. And I mean, even down to the little stuff, like no one knows what the right names of the roads are. And it's not just the planning commission, and it's not just the public members. It's FedEx and UPS, and like, everyone's kind of confused about the road naming. And then there's quite a few issues already existing with the Mulligan and the Manzanita and the Reservoir Roads. Mulligan flooding down at the bottom, where Mulligan and and Manzanita meet up. It's that was supposed to be widened out. And it's tight, like only one person can turn in there at a time now. So there's, I have some concerns with the parcel split. Again, I'm not against development. I'm not against development of these parcels. But the access seems like it's an issue. There is a a super good private road, Labrador Lane, that accesses almost right to parcel A that's in place already. It seems like that would be a much more viable access point. It's got a much gentler slope, gentler grade. And you know, that would be an option. I haven't seen that explored. I'm also very concerned about the alternative dwelling units, ADUs. In the planning documents, it states that there's an unspecified number could be built. Today, I'm hearing one on each of the parcel A and parcel B, one additional unit. But up until today, I I was unclear if that meant that you could put 10 on each parcel. So a lot of unknowns, and it seems like this is just trying to get kind of ran through, and everyone's kind of confused. So that's that's the only comments I have. And thank you for for taking the time to listen to me.
Thank you, Eric. Is there any more public comments on Zoom? Okay, at this time, I will close public comment and bring it back to discussion amongst the commission.
So if I'm if I'm understanding this correctly, right now, he can build one house connected to Reservoir Road with an ADU. And new state laws are promoting ADUs, and that would be incorporated into the general plan provisions. So I'm trying to figure out. It doesn't seem like the effect on Reservoir Road by subdividing that there's any change in effect. Am I missing something? You're still going to have one house that can go onto Reservoir Road with a potential ADU. The other parcel is going to go onto Highway Three. So what's what's the change to Reservoir Road? Am I? So what's what's the change to Reservoir Road? Am I?
Yeah, they have a right to build a home on their rural residential or to build a second home on the rural residential. The effect would be stipulations that we widen the end of Reservoir Road to make it safer for all all the residents.
And so by passing the the resolution, you're essentially requiring them to come into compliance with the fire safe ordinance to go ahead and expand that turnaround to meet the fire safe ordinance turnaround requirements, like they said, either a hammer tee or a 40-foot turning radius. So we're addressing people's fire safety concerns.
Yeah.
Duncan answered or asked the question I had was that additional land that was being used to bring it up. It wasn't going to be usurped or gazumped from a nearest neighbor. It's his own land. So that was my question and I think it's a good answer. So.
The concern, I believe, about access to Reservoir Road and a bottleneck to, I'm sorry, not the reservoir, but the reservoir on the top of Jackass Ridge. Presently, there's a gate at the end of the road.
Correct.
Right? That would, and I'm hoping, I'm assuming that CAL FIRE and the Volunteer Fire Department have access to those keys.
I was up there today. It wasn't even locked. I was up there driving around, hiking around, trying to figure out.
So the gate's closed, but it's not locked.
Today it was unlocked.
It was unlocked. I don't see, and maybe I'm I'm not, there's something that I'm not seeing, but I don't see a bottleneck by expanding the roundabout and creating a driveway. I don't I don't see a bottleneck there.
Well, especially right now, there's a there is a bunch of equipment and firewood and piles of wood chips and stuff that are there from a tree processing operation. So I'm assuming all that would go away and it would actually improve the ability to turn around.
No, I would speculate not because where that wood is and that equipment, I'm just speculating. That's probably on Todd Watkins' property. And so that property stays. I mean, and so it's it's the roundabout, as I saw it, I spent five minutes there, there is the end of the road is the gate. But then it would expand to the left up the hill. Right?
Not not to the right down the hill.
Well, to the right is a house. To the forward would be the gate.
Once you get through the gate.
Right. And so I'm assuming that it would expand to where it starts going up the hill and there's a trench right there. And so maybe it would be nice. I don't think it necessarily needs to be a stipulation, but there would be an easement or there would be a driveway to the applicant's property and a separate driveway to Reservoir Road. So that it would be distinctly separate. So there wasn't wouldn't be a perception of a bottleneck. I don't know if that would add undue burden onto the applicant. I don't even think it's needed.
Do we have any idea if the CSD would move their gate further up the hill so that they wouldn't have to go through that gate every time they wanted to go to their house?
Oh, it's that's a CSD gate? I just assumed that it was a private property owner's gate.
Do we know who the gate belongs to?
Yes, Mr. Jocelyn.
The existing roundabout there that was built when the subdivision went in, it's kind of not feasible to increase the radius of that. You got a house below it with a steep driveway and then you got a house above it with a steep driveway. You're going to have to make this driveway steeper or something. This doesn't look feasible. We're talking about trying to increase that turnout. That's such a great idea. And once you get on to the private property, you've got some room to work, but it gets really steep going up towards the water tanks.
So to meet the fire department's suggestion that the turnaround be at the end of Reservoir Road or on the private property owner's driveway. You would choose to put it on the driveway?
The best place to put it, if it would be okay, would be at the building site at the end of the driveway. The turnout, which is what the the statements from the fire chief were.
Okay. And then what what would be the future of the gate in terms of, you know, access and all that? Is the gate going to stay for someone who wants to go through back and forth every day? Don't know. Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, thanks.
All right, thanks.
So the applicant says that the turnaround at the end of the road is unfeasible. And the fire chief recognizes that that could have been a reality and is and says that the it's adequate at the house where there's ample space for that. And so that satiates the fire fire chief. Could I guess some, I'm not too familiar with this particular neighborhood. And so the Jackass Ridge East and West, I just type it into Google. It's not a street and so it doesn't it doesn't come up. And so is is the ridge? What is Jackass Ridge or where is Jackass Ridge?
Honestly, I don't know. Maybe maybe some of the people that live up there know.
Is anybody in the audience, can they explain where Jackass Ridge East and West is? Ms. Myers?
Would you please step to the podium? Thank you.
Thank you.
What I understand is the water tower is on the ridge.
Is on top of the ridge. And so to the west, the west would be kind of going towards the high school and towards Weaver Bali and the east would drain towards Highway three.
No more than that is what I know.
Okay.
But just look at the topography of it.
Okay.
And where the location of the water tower.
Okay. Also, in terms of just different zoning and there'd be RR versus residential and just based on what I see in Trinity County on maps, there will be agricultural lands leading to rural residential lands. And the same road leads from one to the next. There'll be commercial leading to agriculture, leading to rural residential. Being that this is all residential on the the Reservoir Road, but behind it is all rural residential, two and a half and whatnot. And so it I don't see how it would not be consistent with the general plan.
I agree.
Hoping maybe it sounds like the county and the RCD are tasked at dialing in roads and adding clarity to that. So it sounds like the access to the reservoir definitely needs some clarity in our community. However, that being said, who really needs to know is the fire department and the fire department is crystal clear in what that road is.
I would agree.
Discussion? Well, if there is no more discussion, would my fellow commissioners like to put a motion on the table? Okay.
Okay, so I'm always the fireperson as long as the staff is confident that the fire safe concerns are being addressed. Then I move that the planning commission adopt draft resolution PC dash 2022 dash 12 to adopt a California Environmental Quality Act, SEQA determination of a general exemption 15061 paragraph B, paragraph three. And uphold resolution number PC dash 2022 dash oh four and exhibit A, conditions of approval.
I'll second that.
Rory, Commissioner, no, I'm sorry, Commissioner Heaton.
Commissioner Heaton.
Commissioner Heaton in second and yes. Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor of.
We need a roll call vote. This is a resolution.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Heaton, how do you vote?
Hi.
Commissioner Fall, how do you vote?
Hi.
Commissioner Barrett, how do you vote? Commissioner McIntosh, how do you vote?
Aye.
Thank you. Four zero in favor of Mr. Scribner.
Okay, moving on to planning commissioner reports. Is there any any reports that our fellow planning commissioners would like to present?
A situation that has come to my attention this week that I would like to bring address there and I personally is like over there when the August complex fire burnt down, it was like the church lost a parsonage in a trailer house and I'm currently dealing with the environmental health with Christie and stuff like that. And I've had a marvelous, it's I've only had one complaint, but other than that, it's like I've had a marvelous relationship working with Christie. It hasn't been bad at all. But this week, a situation has come to my attention that it's, I don't know the individual, but it's over in Hetton Valley. And there is an individual who has a septic tank and a permit that is going, I believe his name was Rick. But anyhow, the trench, he's been waiting for a final inspection for eight months. And that's that's the word that I got and it was like, that's not very good. If you have, if you're waiting for an inspection for eight months and something and you can't bury it or cover it, that's that's pretty poor on the county's end. And I don't know any details. That's just what I've known. And and this is what I do know, that it's like if there is a way like the environmental health can work with, because Jeff, he came over, Jeff Dickey, I'll tell you this. Jeff Dickey, from Southern Trinity's perspective, he's the best thing y'all have going because that's the only thing, saving grace that I'll save for the county is because he bends over backwards for us. Jeff Dickey is amazing. And I tell you, I love working with Jeff and everybody on our side of the mountain loves working with Jeff. And it was like, y'all don't know what a jewel that you have when it comes to Jeff. And but it's like the other day he came over and he bends over backwards for us over there. And the one thing that I'll say about Jeff is that it's like, I called him up. I said, hey, I need this. And it was like, he came by the church, picked up the church application for our building permit and stuff like that because he was in the area. He's like, hey, I'll come by and pick it up. He was just down the street. So it's like, and then we we took care of everything. Everything was beautiful. And it was like, but that was the only other thing he had to do. And it was like, he could have drove another 20 minutes into Hetton Valley and he could have made an inspection on this particular.
I think environmental health and the building department have different inspections.
But it's still, if it's just a final inspection, it's not that hard to do a final inspection. It's pretty easy to look down and say, oh, that's a that's level. The trenches are 10 feet apart. They're the same length. It's like a final inspection on that. Jeff is trained to inspect things. A little extra training on how to inspect the sewer system isn't that difficult. He's a sharp guy. He's it's like, it's not rocket science. Poo flows downhill. And it was like, and I think that it's like if we, even if even if it is a different thing, I think that the county would work in the best interest of the county, at least from the people from Southern Trinity's perspective. That it was like, so that things were sped up because Jeff only comes over on Fridays. Y'all know that. And it was like, but it's like, so that we could if, because I know that sometimes Christie is busy like this week, I called and said, hey, I need an inspection. She says, yeah, I'm in meetings all week. It's like, no problem, no problem. And that's to me, not a big deal. She's being open, honest forthwith with me. And it was like, and like I said, I've had a marvelous relationship working with her. And it was like, and I, but not everybody's had the same relationship working with her that I've had. And it was like, and so, but I want to say if we could streamline that and make it a little bit easier. It was like, it sure help the people on South Trinity's end of the thing and their perspective. Because I have some people who are pretty upset. And that's what I wanted to share.
I'm impressed they're even getting it permitted.
You know what? I'll tell you one thing. Somebody called and asked me, they said, Todd, you're on the planning commission. What should you do? I said, do it. I said, I wouldn't worry about a permit. If they treated you that way, don't worry about it. Just do it.
We'll strike that from the record.
Yeah, we can do that. But it's like, but that's, but that's how we, that's, that's that's our perspective from South Trinity. And it was like, if it takes eight months to get an inspection on something like that, it's like, I'm sorry. We could walk it from here and be there, get it done quicker.
I think we all hear, we hear what you're saying and we share your concerns and it's 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 a challenge getting projects through in our county.
And it's like, but like I said, it's like I've had a marvelous relationship working with Christie and she's been great for me. And so.
Well, not necessarily a report, but Deborah, she got myself and Commissioner Barrett all signed up with the Planning Commissioners Association Conference in Pleasanton. And we're really looking forward to that. And so we're thankful for the county.
And we have the other three going to the Institute of Governments of county government, I can't quite get their name, signed up to go for a training there that same week.
Institute for Local Government, ILG.
Local Government, yes.
Has their regional planning commissioner trainings in Arcata on October 14th.
Beautiful.
Wonderful.
Thank you.
And at this conference, there will be, there is, there will be sessions and meetings. There'll be trainings at the conference as well. So it sounds like it will be a very educational weekend for us all. So thank you for the county, to the county for helping facilitate this.
Thank you.
Be sure to check your county emails for your hotel confirmations. We're going to get those taken care of tomorrow.
Okay.
Beautiful.
That would mean that, I believe that means that we would not have a planning commission meeting on October 13th. Just to let people know ahead of time.
I appreciate that. Okay, if there is nothing else from the planning commissioners, is there a planning director's report?
Yes, there is. It's very short, though. One of the things that I wanted to see too and from a couple of different requests from different board of supervisors members was to ensure that any training that was possible, that commissioners would be would be able to attend. And so we made that a priority going forward. And I just want to thank Deborah for making all that happen. So that's all I have this time around. Thank you.
You're going to introduce your new staff person? Hint, hint.
Yes, the newest member of the planning department is actually Mitchell Wexler. He comes to us from, actually, he's a Cal Poly graduate. So we are very fortunate to have him up here as an assistant planner. And so you'd like to stand up to introduce yourself?
Hello there. My name is Mitchell. I am new with the county of Trinity, as can be seen, and I am very excited to be working here. I really do appreciate, honestly, the kind of community that is fostered up here, one of connections between one another and coming from a suburb, it is very refreshing, honestly. But anyway, I just want to say that I am very excited to work here and I look forward to working with every single one of you.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Right on. Welcome. All right, before we adjourn, I would also just like to add, just like kind of send my condolences and express All right, before we adjourn, I would also just like to add, just like, kind of send my condolences and express that our, our local, one of the oldest and, and most established and credible consulting companies, Trinity River Consulting, is closing their doors and they're closing their doors because there is not enough licenses being processed through the county. And farmers are losing hope. And according to the, the consultants, the program is gonna be, really have a hard time staying afloat with the few that are getting through. And so that's, that's a business that hires employees, I believe eight full-time employees. And that provide living wage positions for families in our community. And so I just really hope that the county can, can get more farms through the process so that we can continue farming.
Where, where are we with that holdup? Like what, what's the plan moving forward?
So currently, we're at thirty-one licenses. And what we have seen is the new impetus that we have put on the consultants. Essentially, we have doubled that amount that have made it through the compliance memos. So we have like sixty-two that have been approved, but there's only thirty-one been issued notice. So we have, what I have given to the division director, Sean, is that we produce a compliance plan. And that compliance plan will actively separate SEQA determination documents from the compliance of the ordinance and then put forth a timeline for compliance on the ordinance side. But it will allow us to, to issue the licenses, which is a good thing. And then hopefully get more of these things moving forward. So what it'll do is it will condition the ordinance side. So, and this is at county council right now being worked out for the particulars. But we're wanting this ASAP. Hopefully next week I'll get some kind of a, a resolution from them on this and we can move forward with it and start moving these things forward. Because we're all kind of concerned what's gonna happen at the end of the year with the board of supervisor changeover, potentially new planning commissioners. We just don't know. But that's all behind the scenes. And what I try to impress upon them is the importance of getting these licenses out that have met the SEQA requirements. And let's work with our farmers on the ordinance side of it, condition them, given that, give them some months to work through getting their permits or whatever. And there'll be some showstopping numbers. There'll be some that will not meet those criteria. And so they just will not be able to be noticed until criteria is met. But there are some that, there's a lot of, there's a lot of variability. And so we'll be able to work with them. And that is the plan. So I can put out there that I told our division director, Sean, I told him that if he is able to get a hundred licenses through by the end of the month, I'll buy steak dinners for everyone in the whole department. And so I know that really pushed the, that really, you know, pushed this thing along. So he's really trying to get to that. And this new compliance plan is one of the ways that we're gonna be two-thirds of the way there with a couple of weeks left. So that's just where we're standing right now. In regards to you saying that we had about thirty-one or whatever that have their license and they have their license and it's like another thirty-one that is ready, they, they, they passed everything, but they haven't received the licensing yet. How long is it gonna take for them to get their licensing? That's, that's part of the compliance plan. So once I get a resolution of that from county council, then we'll be able to move on them. And what you'll see, when that changes, what you'll see is ten or fifteen or twenty get noticed in a single week. And that's, that's what I want to see happen. Because the ordinance side of it, there is some, there's some give one way or another. It's the SEQA side is absolutely set in stone and we have no control over that whatsoever. So the back and forth between our consultants and the consultants or the applicants, it creates a lot of friction and back and forth. But once that SEQA is actually accomplished and done and we get compliance memos, that's when we have some variability on. I don't want to go back and say provisional licenses, but it's conditioned. The license will be conditioned. They have to meet the requirement still, but they'll have thirty days or sixty days or ninety days to meet the specific requirements set forth on the ordinance side, not on the SEQA, but on the ordinance side. So that's something we just got work through these last two weeks. And I just asked a question sitting in the same seat probably three hours ago of a county council and they said they have it now and they're working on it. And I said, I need this today. I need it tomorrow. And I need this ASAP.
And is there a provision that county council can, for want of a better word, slow play it? You know, we've already lost three good paying jobs, successful business, closing the doors. What teeth do we have to make sure that it gets pushed through in a timely manner?
So no, number one, it's not a resolution that has to go to the board. It is a policy. So this, this doesn't have a lot. Once, once they identify the language, it needs to be put in the policy. We should be able to publish this policy in a day. Basically, just I'll sign the thing and it'll be good to go. But as far as getting people to actually, are you talking about our consultant side or the applicant side?
Just in general, because as we discussed with the training next month, there's effectively no planning commission meeting for two months now. So I, I guess I'm looking for a timeline for when these people can start to build their business and not wait two months to come back for you to tell us, oh, we haven't heard anything yet and we're still waiting, you know?
Well, this doesn't have anything to do with the planning commission whatsoever. These are not CUPs, these are not DUPs. These are actually SEQUA compliance memos that have been received that we're working through issues on the ordinance side.
No, I just meant as far as when we're talking to you in two months' time, you'll have something hopefully to tell us.
It sounds like he's, you know, he's doing what he can to put pressure in the right places.
I would agree.
Thank, thank you for your efforts.
Do, do you anticipate that we will have a planning commission meeting later this month? No, because there's nothing to agenda.
Nothing that I know of.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, well, this meeting is adjourned.